Good afternoon and welcome to a special meeting in the Select Board on November 3rd, 2023. We are joined by members of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, who graciously met with us at the intersection of Chickatobit Road and Randolph Ave just over the last couple of hours, and now have agreed to come back and talk to us about the intersection. And so if you all could just identify yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Carrie LaValle. I'm the Deputy Administrator and Chief Engineer for MassDOT Highway.
Hi, John McInerney, District 6 Highway Director.
Thanks, John.
I'm Neil Buttrell, Assistant Administrator for Traffic and Safety.
It's Neil, did you say?
Neil Buttrell.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Michael O'Dowd, MassDOT's Director of Major Projects.
And I'm Owen Kane, I'm the Deputy General Counsel for MassDOT.
All right, thank you very much. And I think we have remotely Erin Bradley, who's with us. And so, as I said, we just had the meeting at Chickatobit. There were a lot of questions and a lot of back and forth with a lot of the residents. Very helpful, as it was organized by Senator Timelton. And it was very helpful, and we appreciate you and the Secretary coming out. And we appreciate you coming back here so we can perhaps talk about maybe a few more of the details in terms of timing and what can be done in the short term, and then what can be done in the longer term. So I think those are, you know, in my mind, those are the kind of two areas. So maybe, Roxanne, if you want to start going, talking about, just generally about the roundabout issues, or do you want to talk about short term first? It's up to you.
However you want to do it.
Well, it's up to you. It's up to you.
Well, I mean, I just think, first, I wanted to thank everybody that did come to the meeting. I mean, it's hard on a Friday for all of you, for all of our residents that came. And I think you heard pretty clearly that people were not happy with having a roundabout there. One of the residents had said there were 1,800 people that signed on to a petition against the roundabout idea. Past history has shown that there was a proposal many, many years ago of putting dedicated left turn lanes there. And we have brought this up several times. I know Mr. Zulis has brought it up as well, to do the left-hand turn lanes. Residents, you heard it clearly from them. And the question is, as terms of even short-term solutions, it seems logically that we'd want to try that along with studying the corridor, which I'm happy to hear will be done, and that we're not doing anything such as a roundabout. We're going to be doing a study of the corridor, but I think we could also do these dedicated left-hand turn lanes and see. And, you know, I don't want to get in, I mean, let's hear what your solutions are, but I will tell you, I did read this functional design report, and I do have a bunch of questions. I did bring those questions up when DOT had come in before with Howard Stein Hudson. So I want to hear more from you, what you're thinking in terms of short-term solutions.
So I think one of the short-term solutions that was mentioned was that we were going to evaluate at least two more intersections that are existing, and the timing was something that was a big concern that we had brought up. So we did agree that we'd go back with our District 6 office, as well as our traffic section, to look at the timing of those intersections to see if improvements could be made, and to kind of evaluate what the volumes and the turning counts were to look at those. I believe another comment that was brought up was the timing of the current left turn signal that is going northbound. Yes, I believe it's northbound, right?
South, well, southbound, yeah.
Southbound, okay, I apologize.
That's all right.
My compass is not perfect. So going southbound, we said we could look at the timing on that because someone did make the comment that they feel like the left turn doesn't come up as often as it should. So that's another intersection. We can look at signal timing, kind of the control of. Adding the left turn pocket going the other direction is something we'd have to talk to traffic about. So those ones that I just said, which is really just signal timing, those are easier short-term solutions that we can start evaluating pretty quickly. But I don't think, I don't think Neil was there when we were talking about adding the left turn pocket to have a protected left turn going the opposite direction. That's something we have not had an opportunity to talk to our traffic section about, but we can definitely sit down and like, look at it. People were proposing to avoid the center lane to accommodate that left turn instead of actually doing any sort of right-of-way widening. So that was the feedback we'd heard today, if I'm interpreting that correctly. So that, but we don't have what we call the doghouse signal in there now. So we have to look into what we treat as a new signalhead as part of that. So that's something we can, we haven't talked about it in our group, but so I can bring that back because that was a comment that was brought up today.
Okay.
So on that, if I may, Roxanne, so on that. So right now, we have the left-hand turn signal that's on between 3:00 and 6:00. And is there any downside, you know, while we're figuring out whether we can get the lane? Is there, can we get it on all the time?
Right, so that's what I need to, specifically for that one, we can look at similar to the other two intersections. We can look at the timing and the clearances and all that. We can grab that data from the control boxes and kind of evaluate if it still makes sense.
Yeah.
And then the other direction doesn't have that now. So that would be a little bit more study would be needed to kind of evaluate if that makes sense. I think one of the concerns that I did mention to you is that although people emphasize the left turn accidents, there were also a lot of speed issues that we were concerned about as well, that we don't think the left turn would remedy that concern. So I think that was some of why we were proposing the roundabout, to reduce the severity of the crashes.
And that's fine with respect to the long term. And you all can figure that. But just, Roxanne will get into a lot of the long term, but just in terms of the short term, if the idea is, okay, we have that, we have the left turn signal that's on between 3:00 and 6:00. When we heard before from DOT, we said, well, can you turn that on all the time? And they said, you all or someone, I don't remember who responded to us, said, basically, you can't do it because of throughput.
We have to evaluate it because I don't know. That's why I said, that's why I wanted to do the evaluation because I don't, I don't know without looking at all the information.
Yeah, if you make that de facto left turn only lane, then all the through traffic is in the one lane.
Right.
You know? And the flip side is you could make it a through-left, but the only way to operate a through-left lane would be to, the other side, the other point about would be stop.
Oh, it would be stopped.
Because they're not dedicated lanes. You don't have a dedicated.
Yeah, so it's just a little more evaluation.
So you're potentially now backing up in the complete opposite direction because those would have to be what's called split phasing.
Right.
Because you can't really run the left against the two opposing lanes.
Right, right, right. But I think, I think, I think it's fair to say that on that score, we're more, we're more concerned about safety, you know, than, and it's a trade-off, right? And in the short term, although it may not be so much short term now because it could be three years now, right? I mean, if you're not going out till September.
Stressing the following spring.
Yeah, yeah, so you start building the following spring, and then you build over 18 months, so probably three years, right? Roughly, you know? So, so then during those three years, what can we do to, you know, and in our anecdotal evidence from, from, from the police department, was that the left, it's the left turn, that we get a lot of left turn crashes.
Right, so we have that, I think I mentioned too, we have that crash data. We can provide you with all the crash information we have. That's already on our website now. We have a crash portal where you can look at all this information, the types of crashes. And then we do pull the crash reports from the police to gather all that data, and that's what Neil's team does. So all I can say is we can evaluate the signal, but the end result may be we find that it still makes more sense this way. But if that's true, we'll make sure to bring it back to you guys to kind of demonstrate.
Okay.
And we're focusing on safety. We're not looking at capacity. We want to focus on safety because of the high crashes at this location, but I want to make sure that Neil and his team have had the opportunity to evaluate the pluses and minuses that we can bring back to the community.
And is the, is the kind of timing on this, all right, we're going to evaluate whether it makes sure it makes sense to keep the signal on. And that's kind of, and maybe you can give us some sense, whether that's three weeks or three months or whatever, right? And I don't want to hold you anything. I understand it's hard, but, but, you know, we've been waiting a long time for this, as you heard. And then the next thing is, okay, so maybe you can change the signaling, but, and then the next step is maybe you can do a lane, right? Or maybe coincident, right? You can work on it at the same time. We add the lane, and then, and then, and then the timing on that may be a little bit more, right? Maybe that takes a little longer, I don't know, I'm guessing. Or maybe, maybe you'll tell me that's, maybe, you see what I'm saying? I'm trying to get a segmental view here, right? You get, you get your signals, that's, that, that, our estimate is X, right?
Yeah.
Our lane, our estimate is X, and, you know, I just.
Yeah, so I think the biggest thing I want to emphasize is we promise to evaluate all these options. But it doesn't mean we're necessarily going to agree that all these options are the safest alternative. So I want to make sure we get all the information in front of you guys so before we make a decision, you guys understand why that's the decision we made.
Yeah.
And, and part of the midterm or long-term solutions, that's why with the study being done this spring, we think a lot of that will get brought out as part of that bigger study, which I think Mike was saying is 15 intersections.
There's 15, yeah.
Included as part of that. So we really did spread it out to kind of get the corridor. But again, that's why I was saying, short term, we can look at the signal timing and see if there's tweaks to what's out there now that we think will create a safer intersection, both here and the other two locations.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess from our perspective, that's, it's really the safety that's, that's key.
Right, so and I just want to say is that we couldn't do it all and find out that the safest option might not be a dramatic change. So I just want to put it out there. I want to analyze it and come back to you with that information so you understand where we are instead of just saying the throughput or whatever you were told last time. I want to make sure we get the information.
Yeah, so Carrie, that was what was frustrating because it was, safety is important, but we can't do this because of throughput. And we thought, well, wait a minute, we're talking about safety, we're not talking about throughput. And maybe throughput, maybe you'll tell me throughput is safety, but that wasn't entirely clear.
Exactly, and that's, that's what I want to make sure we have the time to kind of evaluate because there are sometimes issues where if the throughput is a problem, you start, maybe you switch from left turn accidents to rear-end accidents. So there is pros and cons that we have to look at.
Or people divert through neighborhood streets.
Or they cut through, yeah, there's other issues that could.
You take them off the state highway system because they can't get through, and they start going through the neighborhood streets.
Right.
And there's always concern, and they back up them. But that's something we want to evaluate because of what we got today, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Wells has joined the meeting.
Oh, great, great. You want to go ahead, Roxanne? I want to.
Sure, I have a couple things. You had just talked about earlier 15 intersections in the corridor, but you're evaluating two more intersections. So which ones of those particularly?
The two were the ones that were mentioned by the community today.
Yeah, the two that were mentioned out there were Hillside and Reed. So the existing signals out there, to sync them.
That was the quick build, that was the quick build solution that, that they, people had asked if we could look at what the timing is because they think the timing's off, and we said we could look at the timing. It might not change the timing, but we can definitely look at to see what happens.
I would, that's very different than I think this 15.
Yeah.
Right, you already have existing signals.
Yeah, so the 15 intersections, we'll also evaluate as part of it, something that we do is intersection control evaluations now at every time we look at intersection changes. So it may be proposing other treatments to the intersections other than, even if they're currently signalized, there could be other options getting presented as part of the alternatives analysis. So we go through that as we do the corridor study.
And the corridor study is going to run from when to when?
It started already, they started your counts now. Oh, you mean the distance, or do you mean the timeframe?
The distance and the timeframe.
So it started already, and September was when they were starting to take counts, and they are expecting to be done in the spring.
Counts have completed, and we're in the process right now of just evaluating all the turning movement counts, the volumes, the speeds through that area, and then start developing some of the, some of the concepts or alternatives for looking at short-term improvements.
There was a gentleman who has a business along that roadway, and he had expressed concern about when you're doing the study because it's a slower time for his business versus, you know, at other times. So I'm just wondering how we're going to do that then? Because it looks like you already got your count.
Because he's a garden and nursery center, and there was concern that they're busiest times in the summer. So we can, we can work to see if we can add a factor to his driveway where we do like a factor that you can increase for trip generation. We can do that for his business.
Okay, and to follow up with some of what Michael was saying, with the signalization, when do you anticipate that that would start in fixing the signal, you know, so it has the dedicated turn? My question with that is, are we going to be stopping traffic in both directions and have turns for each?
That's, that, I don't know, right? Like, without getting the information, I don't want to say what the solution will be. I want to just say is that we can, we can quickly turn around and start to look at what the data is now.
Yep.
And then we can tell you what some solutions we get from it are. But I don't want to say what it is because I, I don't think that's fair to the people listening because I don't have it in front of me.
And the other thing is, I mean, obviously, I appreciate that you came out and listened to what the residents have to say. You know, a lot of, when we were discussing this, I had picked up this design, functional design report that you have been using for facing some of the decision-making.
Yeah.
And some of it was a little concerning reading it. I had some questions on that, and I had brought that up last time. I don't know if this is appropriate to let you know about a few of the concerns I had with it.
Yeah, I might not be, we might not be able to answer them all today, but I can take them down and try and get you some written answers afterwards if that helps, or if you want to email us to have it. Make sure we catch what you got correctly, that's fine.
Well, it looks like in this report, first of all, the one thing that it says on page 1 is that they evaluated four different intersections, design alternatives, and DOT, they worked with DOT to choose a preferred alternative. The tables that are in here only have one. There's no operation summary for alternatives 1, 2, or 3 in here, and this is the whole thing I downloaded. So when you have a report, it doesn't have that information. We didn't need to see what that showed. You know, also in the report, it says that you evaluated design alternatives for extensive safety and congestion issues. So that just, you know, I think that's important to note. We also don't know what the input would, impact would be in all different legs of the intersection if we don't have the data. The one thing that did come up at this particular meeting today, one of the gentlemen had talked about the backups on Chickatobit. And it should be noted that in roundabout, doing the roundabout, there's a significant backup, your data supports that there will be bigger backup. And as we were standing there at the intersection, you could clearly see, this was 2:00 in the afternoon, and the backup along Chickatobit was pretty significant. Now, you know, couple that with 5:00 in the afternoon, and with a roundabout, where's the traffic going? I mean, that's going to be a huge backup. There was already a huge backup there.
Yeah, and I think we had mentioned that our team is working on getting a simulation package ready to kind of show you guys to demonstrate the flow, but we're happy to get that together before the next time we meet. And then those other three alternatives that are not shown in there, I can talk to the team to see if we can get you some more information on those.
And again, I think it's really important that we look at that whole corridor in correlation with whatever we're going to end up with. You know, we might find that doing these small changes might make a big difference between, you know, doing the signalization and doing maybe a few other little things along the corridor might really solve the problem. And I think we should be open to that. The data in here too, so you're going to base your decisions on new data, is that correct? So this is going to be like sort of.
We have gathered new data, yeah, and our process has changed since that. We do have now a new process we do for traffic intersections. It's ICE, it's Intersection Control Evaluation, correct?
Yes.
And it's new, and that we evaluate if we're adding turn lanes or if we're changing it from a signal to a roundabout, that we have to kind of, there's, there's stop control, there's certain elements that trigger us having to go through that evaluation, which was newer than when this was originally started in design. So that would be part of the corridor.
Okay.
So the new, the new process does a lot, it's like, so it's the safety and it uses crash modification factors. So if we do this treatment, this is what, you know, data history shows that it can reduce crashes. So all that stuff gets evaluated, so it's not just like an operational.
And it talks about right-of-way, it talks about when there's adjacent park lanes versus not, environmental factors. It kind of is a, is a better way of kind of taking that into account, which is why we've expanded the process beyond just the functional design report.
Yeah.
So that will be a part of something that we have to do as we look at the corridor.
So it's good to find out that this is actually going to be sort of set aside. We're going to have all new information to base things on. The other question or concern I have is one of the neighbors was very concerned that there's some eminent domain going on on her property to accommodate the roundabout. So there was concern about that from this particular neighbor.
So looking at the alternatives in that location, it would be almost impossible to not take right-of-way. We do any work even for the left turn lanes because the shoulders are substandard through that corridor, and there's not very good pedestrian bicycle accommodations or transit accommodations. So unfortunately, it will be very difficult to not do corridor improvements that don't take some form of right-of-way.
And then the other question I have.
We are trying to limit the impacts, obviously, as much as possible, but for anyone who's familiar with that location, the curb is much, is very close to the travel lane, which is not really a safe option either.
Okay. And the other question I have is with, with a roundabout, with bicycles, it, it, my question, I guess, would be this. If you're entering a roundabout and you have a bike on your right-hand side and you're in a truck, because that, that roadway does allow trucks.
So I believe the combination was a shared-use path along the roundabout in this case, which would take them actually off the road surface because right now it's not very safe for them with that minimal shoulder either. So they had been looking at trying to provide a wider path where they would not be in the roadway, but they would be at the same level above the road, like above the roadway.
Okay, because that is a problem if you're in a truck. You don't pick them up, you're looking to.
It's a problem with a car too.
Yeah, you're looking to the left when you're going in.
Yeah, no.
So that would be another thing. But I'm happy to hear that you're going to be looking at these other alternatives more seriously. I think that's really important, and putting in some, some things right now. So, thank you.
Let's see if there's comments or questions from Richard or, Richard or Erin. Although Nick's not here to unmute them, I think, so, so.
I think, I think I can unmute.
Oh, there's Richard.
Can you hear me? I know. But let Erin go first, I'm, I'm listening. So I don't have her nasty comments, but she does, she goes first.
Thank you, Member Wells.
Yep.
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Sorry, I had to leave the site early and miss most of the walk, but I appreciate the conversation that's happening and appreciate that there is other ideas for the Chickatobit, that corridor right there. So I'm just going to continue to listen, and again, thank you for being here today.
Richard?
We got to unmute myself again, am I there?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, so, thank you for coming out. I'm fortunate that I have, do I see Lieutenant Alvis sitting at that table?
He's, he's here, he's here. He's not at the table, but he's here.
Oh, I could say, I don't know, it's like, I could, because I'm going through the Mohawk Valley in New York right now. So just a couple of points. So I, as you know, I'm a little bit different in this and that's, given my background as, as lieutenants would be, the causation of many of the serious quality injury accidents we have there as well as fatalities caused MassDOT to come to the idea of the roundabout six years ago. I was in the room, I was chair with then-time Administrator Mike Denny, who had a very extensive DPW background. And we were both shocked, but I've come to understand now and understanding the roadway, be much of what Roxanne was just asking about was all going to be solved 20 years ago when we took, I don't know how many feet it was out of that hill in Chickatobit to prove the light aside and put all the signalization in, added the hillside, street intersection lights that were there, added Reed Street that weren't there. So I know this is not an easy fix, but I've done so much research on roundabouts since you first introduced this to us six years ago. I understand why you came up with it. And can I just ask one question, Mike?
Yeah, please.
Is this tip money? Is this tip money that was, it's tip money, right? And I do believe, my money of tip is, once you find the safest alternative, aren't you required to go with the safest alternative? I think someone from Howard Stein Hudson taught me that a while ago.
So specifically, the type of money we're using is called H-tip funding, which is meant for safety improvements. And because this is a top 200 crash, we've been working with our traffic safety unit to provide the safest alternative for this intersection, which is where the roundabout came from. But we are initiating a corridor study because of the other concerns brought to us. So I have told people that we will continue to evaluate it. We might find that the roundabout, we still think is the safest alternative, but when we, whatever decision we come to, we're going to bring back to the community and make sure you guys have a chance to see how we got to that decision.
And I support all of that, and you know, looking at the whole corridor because even though 28, for Milton as a whole, we have a volume problem, especially on the AM and the PM commute. To Roxanne's point about Chickatobit today, so it's a Friday afternoon. 28 North is shut down, they shut down one, 24th was shut down one lane, as well as, as you know, they put the HOV in at the split. So that just ways automatically diverts Wapatake Road to Chickatobit across 28, and that queue will back up all the way almost to the reservoir in some days, Will's reservoir. So I don't, I don't, I was not surprised if the data would show extensive backups for Chick, because remember the Bull Hill roadway, the parkways, Chickatobit, those are built for like passive sightseeing and recreational use, not daily commuting. And they, they really haven't changed since they were built over 50 years ago. But I do want to, I don't want to take a minute to Friday afternoon. Just thank you so much for coming out, and thank you for looking at this. And thank you, Lieutenant Alvis, for your expertise, as always. I'll leave with that, Mr. Chair. Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
I'll stay up.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. So, so let me ask you this. What, what is a fair timeframe to get a response on the signalization? I mean, and.
Can we get back to Monday morning?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Monday during the day, like, let us have our chance.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Traffic and the other, you're going to have to just.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
We might have to send people out to the boxes to kind of like, look at it a little bit, so.
Okay.
But can you give us?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We need private, like, reader.
Yeah, no, I totally get it.
It's my question, what signal time are you talking about?
So I think.
We talked about Hillside, what is it?
Reed and Hillside, and then also, and also the Chickatobit and Randolph Ave, the left-hand.
Right, so I think the first one, the two interceptions, I mean, we can jump on that.
Okay.
We have to look at that.
Yeah, the other one might be a little bit more.
Yeah, so I mean, just, you know, they're not all created equal.
Yeah, got it. The left-hand one is arguably more important because of the safety.
And the people that need to be brought in.
All right, so, so if we think about, we think about those two, Hillside and Reed, and then we got the left-hand turn signal at Chickatobit and Randolph. And then, so you're going to, so you're going to think about a timeframe for those two things?
On Monday.
Got that. And then, and then if you could let us know what a fair timeframe is for finding out whether we could do a dedicated left-hand lane as well? That would, you know, you know, we talking, this, we can figure out whether this makes sense in X amount of weeks, and then if we just do decide it makes sense, we can get it done in X amount of weeks, or hopefully weeks, but that might be.
We can discuss that next week. I just feel that, I just don't want to put you on the spot with it being like.
I totally understand, no, I totally understand.
3:15, trying to like call people up to have this.
No, I totally understand, I totally understand.
We can get back to you next week on like what we think could be timeframes. Again, the timeframe would be to evaluate if a left turn makes sense. It's not necessarily the timeframe to install it. So I want to make sure we do that first.
Right. Right.
And then we could say like.
Can you give us a sense of both, though? Can you give us a sense of?
We can, but I don't want to, the only thing I would hesitate to say is I don't want to say an installation date if we find after we've done the evaluation it won't work, so I, I'll just put that caveat on.
Carrie, I'm not looking for an installation date, I'm looking for, if we decide in three weeks it makes sense to do it, it'll take us, it'll take us a month or two, or it'll take us six months, just so we have a sense, right?
The hardest part will just be temperature probably, as that gets, right?
Yeah.
Getting something out there that's not going to get ripped up immediately, the plows would probably be one constraint.
You mean, you mean for the separate lane, the new lane, okay, okay.
And, and that needs a signal head we have to order too, which we don't.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think the short answer is let us, we, we need to talk us with the people, I mean, you've got material procurement that could come into.
Yep.
I, I'll tell you, stuff is not coming quickly, so, I mean, that's one thing, and that, you come to that with depending on what, um, the solution is, what may be available, if we have some inventory.
Because that's a whole new signal head, we have to, I, I don't want to, I don't want to sound negative, but I just want to say it's like, we'll evaluate it, we can at least get the evaluation can be done quickly, the timing of what those, some of those other things are.
So that signal head that has the left hand, you couldn't use that same one?
That, you can't use it for the other direction. You don't have, the other one there is one there now, so you'd have to order a whole new signal head and figure out if that master can take that weight and where you, like, there's, there's a process, it seems simple, like just throw it up there, but it's not quite.
For one going north, you mean, because the one going south is, is there, it's just only three to six.
That one we can look at, but the one going the other direction, it doesn't even exist, so trying to procure that might be a little bit, and, and like Neil's saying, we don't know what the, we'd have to look at the width of the roadway to make sure it's as safe.
Got it, got it.
So, I, I just want to say is we can look at it, I just don't know the timing of actually implementing that intersection's a little more complicated than the other two smaller intersections that we mentioned, but.
But if you, you give us some sense, that'd be great, yes, absolutely, totally understand.
That's fine.
Some of our operational folks are here, um, I don't know if there are any questions that, that we're missing that we should be asking, um, from public safety or from DPW, is there anything?
Something I would recommend too, is we have a speed management website, um, that talks a lot about different speed management measures you can take on roadways, I would really highly recommend you guys check that out, it does talk a little bit about roundabouts, but it talks about other alternatives. Um, obviously, this location is very difficult, because it's kind of this like transition zone, but it does kind of go into details about, um, different speed management suggestions that we suggest to communities, um, I would, I would say just check it out if you're interested to kind of look at it, to see what kind of ideas we have out there, and it's a pretty good site, that, um, Neil's team again has set up.
Good. Uh, any, any other comments from Richard, or questions from Richard or Aaron?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm good, thank you again, um, sorry everybody for being there on a Friday afternoon, I appreciate it, and just for the record, Milton is down, one-nothing.
It's a soccer, high school soccer.